This conference will now be recorded.
When we get to the public hearing phase of the budget, it should go fairly quickly. As you all are aware, we've had three previous meetings whereby we had deliberations and discussions and presentations on the fiscal year 2021 proposed budget. My apologies again. It's my fingers here. Give me one second. Here we go. Alrighty. My apologies again. As I stated, tonight's presentation is going to be very brief. By the Code of Virginia, the Board, of course, is prohibited from voting on the proposed budget tonight. The budget is scheduled to vote on tentatively at the May 21st, 2020 special meeting of the Board of Supervisors, in which you will be asked to adopt the budget to include setting of the tax rates and the fees that I've mentioned in the budget resolution. And again, that is tentatively scheduled for May the 21st. The calendar year 2020 rates do remain unchanged. We indicated again that the Board wanted to adopt the budget consistent with the current tax rates. The tax rates here are shown on your screen for your information. The real estate tax rate, including mobile homes, will remain at 71 cents per $100 assessed value. No change in the personal or business property rate at $4. Personal property tax relief still remains at 41%. Machinery and tools at $1, and the passenger buses at $3. So again, the current year proposed budget includes no changes in the current tax rates. There are some changes in terms of a few fees that are being proposed in the fiscal year 2021 budget. As mentioned in the previous discussion, it does include revenue of approximately $80,000 for the proposed meals tax at 6%, which would be levied beginning July 1st if the Board approves. The change in certain planning and zoning fees, they are enumerated in the public hearing notice. And there is an adjustment in the ambulance billing fees in which the county will be recovered. We receive recovery from insurance and not the patients, and that is also one of the fee changes. The meals and tax fees changes do require a ordinance for approval, and those ordinance of a public hearing can take place in June, and those fees will take effect July 1st, 2020. The ambulance billing fees does not require a ordinance, and that is included in the budget resolution. The goal of the fiscal year 2021 budget was to develop a budget that was realistically aligned with the COVID-19 pandemic, considering the impact on the local economy, and a budget that continues essential services that protect the health, wellness, safety, and welfare of employees, citizens, and the general public. Again, highlights include level tax rates, no salary increases. It's limited to one position, only one mission critical position in planning community development, and that position is offset by contractual services in another department. No furloughs or layoffs in the proposed budget. And again, where we do have to make some reductions, obviously, there would be some operational impacts, but we do expect those operational impacts to be minimal. This is just a quick summary of the general fund revenues. Local revenues, $23.5 million. That was the deduction of $71,000 from the current year's budget. State revenue, slight decrease of $14,000. Federal revenues, $4,000. And the use of reserves, $2.8 million, a decrease of $330,000, which a lot of it is associated with not having to transfer as much to the CIP. The total general fund revenues fiscal '21, $28,369,42. This represents a $420,081 decrease from fiscal year '20, and the average is about a 1.6% decrease. Do want to mention again that the decrease from the budget that was originally proposed on April 16th, $644,837. The general fund budget. Decreased in funding to outside agencies. Nearly $100,000 decrease in funding to the school system, the local transfer. $100,000 decrease in the transfer to social services. We had several decreases in various departmental budgets. Of course, the budget did reflect an increase in benefit costs due to the increase in Virginia retirement system rates and a 4.8% increase in health insurance costs. The budget does maintain funding for the Virginia Gateway Region at one half of the current contribution. It does, at this particular time, eliminate funding for the Wensbury Area Transit, the Pena Sola Water Conservation District, and the Sussex Housing Authority. This does reflect a $420,081 decrease from the fiscal year 1920 budget, as enumerated on the previous slide. Again, that's about a 1.5% decrease over the current fiscal year budget. This is just the snapshot of the budget as it was advertised. It does show a balanced budget. This is the general fund budget for all funds, where you can see the total budget is $49,529,975. This includes the budget for all funds. Overall, this represents a $66,158, a 0.1% change over the fiscal year '20 adopted budget. When you combine this with the capital improvement budget, the total operating CIP budget is $57,706,149. The total CIP budget does represent pretty, does represent two major projects in the CIP, and they are relative to the broadband implementation project and projects that are associated with public safety. The total amount of the CIP is $8,165,016. School projects, $500,000. The source for that funding is carryover, projected carryover from the current year's budget. Fund balance and general fund amounts, $2.3 million, and that's associated with the broadband, other technology, public safety, and the maintenance projects. And the only applicable project for that service would be the new radio mobile communication system at $5.3 million. You have received details of the proposed county's budget. It has been made available on the county's website for two consecutive weeks. It was included in your agenda material on this evening for your, in the public edification. Again, if you want to refer to additional details on the budget, the website is listed here, where the entire budget document has been posted for the public's review. And this concludes the presentation on this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Rollins, for the presentation. And at this time, we will open the floor up for a public hearing, and we will be doing so by district. So at this time, if we have anyone from the Clamert District who would like to have a public comment on the public hearing on this, you may do so at this time. Could you, if you do, please state your name as you come in.
Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was there. This is Susan Corvella from Spring Grove. First, I'd like to commend everybody for all the hard work that y'all have done on this budget. There's been a lot of controversy over the Marina and the restaurant in the past years. And one thing that I would like explained, if possible, if they are both one identity or if they're two identities. I don't understand why the repairs to the restaurant fall under maintenance department when most of the time, the repairs that are being done are not done by maintenance. Shouldn't the restaurant and the Marina have their own identity so that you can follow their expenses individually? Or make everything associated with it as the Marina if they were purchased together as one? One of my concerns is the transparency on what we're spending at the Marina and the seafood restaurant. While looking over the revenue detail proposed and the expenditure detail proposed, I had some questions. And one of the questions is basically, is the Marina and restaurant two separate identities as far as revenue and expenses? Because looking over both of those detailed reports, I only see revenue from the Marina. And the revenue from the Marina appears to be the lease payments for the restaurant. Shouldn't the restaurant be labeled as having revenue from the lease payments? I can't find anything stating the seafood restaurant except for under maintenance department, building, repairs, and seafood restaurant. Should they not have been expenses for the restaurant from 2019 with all the repairs that have been done? And I don't see where the restaurant had any expenses. Or are they being put under the Marina code? And the way that the accounts receivable is now submitted, it's only by code, so you can't really see the detail as to what department it's falling under. It's very confusing when you're trying to see what exactly is being spent at the restaurant and what's being spent at the Marina, and it would be greatly appreciated if some clarification could be given to the citizens, since it's involving our tax dollars. Looking over the 21, the 2021 department request, or the revised recommendations for the restaurant for repairs, I don't see any money being put towards the repairs of the restaurant. And I don't know how, you can't have money put towards that part of it. And on a different subject, and I might have missed this. The first agenda that was submitted had 285 pages, and the updated one that was submitted at 4 o'clock has 292 pages. And I'm just curious as to what changed, because in that timeframe, it's kind of hard to read 292 pages when you've been at work and you don't know what's changed on the budget. And then finally, I believe that the responses, last week, you had said something about when we send in our comments that we would get a reply so that we knew that those comments were sent in. And when I submitted my comments the first time, I didn't get a reply. But when I sent in a specific email to the comments section, I got a reply that mine had been submitted. So I think there needs to be some clarification as to when people submit their comments that they get an instant reply. And I know that not everybody got replies, because a friend of mine submitted one, and she never got a reply saying that it was received. So I think on y'all's part, something needs to be addressed so that that comments can do an instant reply, or whoever receives them automatically replies back to that person. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Corvella, for your comments. And they will be taken to heart in the budget preparation. Is there anyone else from the Clamert District? Clamert Spring Grove? If not, we will we entertain any public comments from the Surrey District.
Hello, this is Diane Cheek from the Surrey District. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can.
Yes, sir. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on the proposed Surrey County budget for FY21. I have reviewed the published budget documents, attended the work sessions, and received answers on questions from members of the Board and the acting county administrator, which I greatly appreciate. I believe it is important for the record to clarify that the FY21 budget is not funding the Assistant County Administrator position. And also, it doesn't state what the plan is for filling the county administrator position. These are vital positions to our county. The proposed budget, which was published and revised on April the 30th, indicates that the Assistant County Administrator position is being downgraded to an Assistant to the County Administrator. This is achieved by removing the funding for the Assistant County Administrator position and replacing it with a special county, I mean, I'm sorry, Special Assistant to the County Administrator. So you can see the words are very important here. Tonight's presentation indicates there is a limit on position changes to only one. The mission critical in planning and community development. Nothing about the county administrator, the assistant, or the special assistant. Additionally, the supporting documents provide a table in Section E, page 191, of authorized position, which shows the Assistant County Administrator as zero for FY21. Feedback I have received on questions I submitted to the Board indicates that the Assistant County Administrator position is not funded in FY21 so that the budget can be balanced. But the position is not going away. Several questions remain on the bud, this budget strategy. If the Assistant County Administrator is not funded, how will this affect our search for a new county administrator? Does this budget fund a search for the new county administrator? Is the plan to have the acting county administrator until the funding shortages are resolved? Once the new county administrator is selected, will there be positions for the assistant or the special assistant? So it creates a whole, a whole group of questions when a critical position, such as the one that Melissa currently holds, is not in the budget. So I understand there's probably a strategy you are doing here, but it's not clear. And as the budget process moves forward, you know, documenting these strategies, such as not funding these key positions that are currently active and searching for a new administrator, is a very important step. And we should have them clearly laid out for this budget so we know what we're actually funding for those positions. As Melissa has in her presentation, you know, unity and community. So we have to be transparent about our strategy so we all understand where we're going. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Cheeks, for your comments on the budget. And they will be definitely taken to heart in consideration by the Board. Are there any other comments from the Surrey District? If there are no comments from, any other comments from the Surrey District, we now call on the Bacon Castle District. Are there any comments from Bacon Castle? No public comments from Bacon Castle? We now call on the Cosley District. Any comments from the Cosley District? No comments from Cosley District? Our last district is the Dendron District. Do we have any comments from Dendron?
Mr. Elliott, this is Mike Evanson from the Dendron Blackwater District. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. We can hear you loud and clear.
To follow up on what Mrs. Corvella said, I have an issue with the transparency at Surrey Seafood. We're seeing where we're spending almost $90,000. $50,000 for a contractor for work that should have been done already. Who signed off on the occupancy permit in the first place? And the person that signed it, was he qualified to sign off on it? Because I'm hearing that we had to go back and put a water shut-off to the building, and that should have been picked up by proper building inspection. Also, I have a problem with 14 years for Windsor Woods for fire protection that was inadequate. I'd like to know who signed off the occupancy permit on that, and whether the person that signed the occupancy permit was qualified to do so. There seems to be a big question about us signing off on things, and we turn around and find out that things aren't like they should be. We listened to Alpha Corporation for over a year give a monthly report on Surrey Seafood amongst others, and I have real questions about what was actually done. They had to go back and replace portions of the flooring. If he was doing his job, why did we have to go back and repair the flooring? So we have an issue with transparency about how the taxpayers' money...
Excuse me, Ms. Evanson. I understand your concern, and I appreciate your concern, but this is a public hearing for the budget. Any questions or anything you want to talk about the budget for the upcoming 2021 year?
Okay, I understand that. So does this come under maintenance? And if any maintenance money that's been at Surrey Seafood, is it going to be delineated in the budget?
Okay, you can, you can ask questions in that line. Yes, sir. All the comments, not, I make comments in that section. My point is, I don't want to take up your time, is just make sure your comments are directed towards the proposed budget.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other comments from the Dendron District? I hear open mic. Any other comments from Dendron? If there are no other comments from the Dendron District, we open it up now to anyone that may be available that want to make a comment at this time. If not, we will close the floor to the public hearing. And we will now have summary from Ms. Rollins. Summary from staff.
Yes, sir. I really don't have anything else to add, Mr. Chairman. Again, you've heard quite a bit of information on the proposed budget. The next scheduled action, again, is the 21st of May, where we're going to be asking you to take action on the budget. I just would like to make one clarification, if I may, and typically, I know this is not done during the process, but I do want to make the citizens aware that the questions that we've had on the Surrey Seafood Marina operations, just so everybody can walk away for a little bit more clarity with that. There, there is a separation in the proposed budget document that shows the revenue for the Marina, and also shows rev, the expenditure side for the Marina. They are clearly delineated in the budget document. On page 25 of the document, you do find where you have the actual expenditures, and then on the opposite side for revenue, that is shown on page... It's another page. I don't see the page number, but the revenue is actually shown as well. In terms of the actual expenditures, the only reason why you see those in fiscal year '19 because you have to remember there was a time period in which the, all the other expenditures were associated in the CIP. So until the actual project got completed, all the expenditures for the Marina, as it was being built and constructed, were shown in the capital improvement plan. So after you get to a full year where it's completely done, then obviously, you're going to be having your expenditures. And those expenditures have been budgeted in a separate, specific budget for the Marina, and that's included in the budget document. At one particular point, there was shown about $19,000 that was in the maintenance budget, but all of that was probably transitional, meaning there was a timeframe prior to fiscal year '20 where we was doing things midstream before we had the opportunity to get through the whole year of that particular project. So that's why they're associated in the maintenance budget in fiscal year '19. And fiscal year '20 was the first full year of operation, and that is the year that we see that separation of the Marina operations with a separate department code, I'm going to use those words, for those expenditures. Just wanted to provide that little clarification.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins. At this, at this time, we will take comments, or any comments that we have from the Board members, and we'll do that at District as well. We will call on Mr. Calhoun first from the Surrey District. Are there any comments that you have, sir?
No, sir. No comment at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Calhoun. Mrs. Little from Bacon Castle, any comments? I hope we still have Mrs. Little with us. Will come back. Mr. Holmes from Cosley, you have any comments, sir?
No, I don't.
Mr. Drury from Dendron, you have any comments?
Yes, yes, Chairman. Just, just one for Ms. Rollins. Just a clarification. I think you've already answered this for me previously. But I just want to be clear, the crater district on aging, on the outside agencies, you know, which, under that budget, it showed no funding. But where is that funding coming from? You had stated, you know, was there still funding coming into the county for the aging through the Department of Services, or how is that working?
Okay, the crater area on aging was a separate agency that the county was funding directly. In the Department of Social Services, there are also a expenditure that's associated with the area on agency. So we elected to, to perhaps prevent some duplication there. And whatever services that can be provided on the crater area on agency can be through, can be done through social services. So that was the reason for the eliminating that from the general operating budget.
So where does, where does the funding for, like, the meals, I think, and food and everything that's being provided for the senior citizens, where does, where does that come from in our budget?
That is through social services.
Okay. Well, thank you. And I thought that you had previously said, I just wanted to clarify, and thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Drury. The only comment that I have is addressing something that came up on the, on the floor tonight, and that is positions that were eliminated from the budget. And those positions were eliminated at this time so that we could get as close to level funding as we could and keep our same tax rate. We will revisit those positions at the next approved budget, where we may have different funding. But at this time, the reason why those positions were eliminated was so that we could get a budget that we could sustain with our current tax rate. Okay? So we will, as a Board, be entertaining to approve the budget for May the 21st. Okay? We will now move to the second item under the public hearing, and that is request for the public hearing for June 1st. This will require a motion, because it will come under orders for the meal tax and the planning, excuse me, our planning fee increase. So at this time, we would need a motion from the Board for a public hearing on these two items on June 4th.
Don't move.
So move. We have a motion. So move, we have a motion uh for a public hearing on the items of the meal tax and for the planning fee increase. Can we get a second?
Second.
It'll be probably move a second. Are there any questions? There are no questions and we have a roll call vote from uh Ms. Chapman on this item of our public hearing for June the fourth.
Yes, sir. Roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Jury?
Yes.
Miss Little?
I don't know whether this little came back on that last time.
Okay, Mr. Holmes, can I get yours?
Yeah.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
And one more time for Mrs. Little, can we get your roll call vote? Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Motion is carried. Uh, I, I want to check if Ms. Powell's still on the line with us.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, here.
And Ms. Powell, did that, did that cover all the concern that, that was raised?
Yes, we will have the uh notices placed in the paper and we will have those two public hearings uh at the June meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. At this time, we uh want to let the public know that is listening, that uh your comments, they are being received on our meetings. Uh, thank you, Ms. Cavelo, for making us aware that you did not get the uh notice immediately. We will definitely do all we can to respond and let you know that your comments have been received. And they are forwarded to the board members. We do get an email with all of the comments from the board uh from the citizens of Surrey County. And we do give it our attention and decision making for the county. So thank you. And we ask that you will continue to forward your comments to us uh by email and they are being received. Uh, are there any, any other comments from the board members at this time? Uh, feel free, uh, if any board members have any comments before we get our county administrator's.
Mr. Elliott?
Yes, Ms. Little.
Mr. Elliott, this is Judy speaking. Uh, a lot of the conversation, I don't know about everybody else, but it's being blinged out. So I'm not hearing all that is um you're saying or some others are saying. So if I am not responding, it's because I didn't hear. I don't know what, what's going on. It could be my, you know, connection. You never know when you're doing a virtual situation.
Yes, ma'am.
But I do want you to know that I'm here and trying to listen.
Okay, Miss Little, I think, I think it may be involved with your connection, but we thank you. I think you're up on everything you've got. Get, we receive your vote on everything that was needed so far on tonight. Are there any comments that you would like to make other than that on the meeting so far tonight?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mr. Calhoun, any comments?
The meeting has went very well and we've accomplished what we did, what we set out.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Calhoun from Surrey, any comments?
No, sir. No further comments.
Mr. Holmes?
No further comments.
Mr. Jury?
Chairman Elliott, thank you. Did, do we need to um make a motion to schedule the uh the meeting on May twenty first? Is that not necessary?
No, no, sir. Not necessary. It was already planned.
Okay. And then my next question is, request for public hearing, what about the continuity of government and the medical transport fee? Do we need a motion for that or not?
No, sir. We, we do not need a motion for that. That will be done by resolution and we will be able to adopt a resolution.
That will be fine. And thank you for the clarification. And that's it.
Thank you, sir. Uh, at this time, we will uh turn over to our county administrator for the county administrator's report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I want to add that um I've been talking with a lot of county administrators and city managers, as you all can imagine, over the last past eight weeks. And in dealing with the actual budget itself, what a lot of us are um actually um are, are putting out there as well is because the budget is just so fluid as it pertains to a lot of changes that had to be made as, you know, due to COVID nineteen. When you get into your new budget year, when you get into fiscal year twenty twenty one, um, you never know what might be coming down the pike in terms of amendments and things of the nature that may need to be made to the budget. I mean, obviously, if your budget exceeds a certain amount of whatever change you need to do, there are certain codes that we need to follow and have to go to actual hearing processes to make adjustments to the budget. But I just want to add, you know, a lot of us are getting through this budget this year and recognizing that, you know, changes may have to be made in the upcoming year. I just wanted to add that to that. Very brief tonight, um, as you all are aware, Congress has passed and the president has signed the coronavirus aid relief economic security, which is referred to as the CARES Act of twenty twenty. And that act does provide a number of different programs to address the COVID nineteen pandemic. Um, a primary component of that act is to assist state and local governments um that have been directly impacted as a result of the COVID nineteen pandemic. And basically, what they have done is established the coronavirus relief fund, which we are referring to as CRF. Now, I think I had mentioned in the previous meeting that a lot of the federal funding that had been previously provided was not making its way down to state and local governments. But the CRF fund does, and I'm sure that you all probably have been watching the news, they have seen some other um uh media coverage regarding um jurisdictions and the funding um that the state has received and the amount that would be passed along to localities. So Sarah County did, of course, receive, I noticed as well, um, of the direct impact that we will receive um from the CRF fund. Um, Sarah County is, will be the recipient of about five hundred and sixty thousand dollars um in that. I do want to reiterate um once, you reiterate it twice and re- reiterated it three times that that money cannot be used as a revenue replacement. So while we are um having shortfalls in our budget, the money has to be used for specifically COVID related expenses. So I do want to share that with you because I know you probably see a lot of um coverage regarding that act over the next couple of days. Um, the Governor Order sixty one, Safer at Home, provides detailed guidelines for businesses. I'm sure you all are aware that come this Friday, um, the order does um provide opening up some other additional businesses. The only thing that we want to add from administration standpoint is for, for businesses and even the public and, and us to be attuned to what those guidelines are. Um, of course, it still focuses on the, the gathering, there's even more. I'm gonna not go to the details of what the order is, but please stay vigilant of it um as we, uh, some of our businesses in the county will be reopening. You probably would see more traffic if you happen to pass by our government center um because we have been received, uh, have communication that um some of our courts, um, our district court and of course, our circuit court has already had um activity. But there are some jury trials um that going to be um happening over the next couple of weeks. Um, our district court, um, is going to be seeing um some cases, which has been different over the last past couple of weeks. So I emergency services and sheriff and I uh district court personnel, common law attorney, clerk of circuit court um are uh, uh, working together to make sure that when that happens, that we're still protecting the safety and healthy the safety and um, and health of those folks who would be involved in those particular trials. We are still solidifying our plans for employees to be um re-acclimated or re-entered back into the workplace. Um, we are, we are hopefully to have those plans solidified over the next couple of days. Um, the plan is tentatively um the day after Memorial Day. And of course, as all this is contingent upon any additional announcements from the governor. But the plan is to start um having uh employees come back on a phased in approach on the twenty sixth. And they will give us about two weeks' time lead um before at such time we begin to um think about how we going to re-acclimate the public back to our facility. We are working on those plans. You have in your um board of supervisors package, you have a report um from Alpha Corporation that's FYI on the two projects that are being wrapped up. Um, if you had the opportunity to go by the um, the new emergency rescue spa facility, you can see that it is um ninety nine percent complete. We're working on the punch list for that. A very beautiful facility. Um, I had the opportunity to drive out today to Dendron and um the uh new water system is being um completed as well and that project is about complete as well, about ninety five percent. So just wanted to bring that to your attention that we are about wrapping up with those two um large projects in the county that would definitely make a difference um in the um unemployment numbers in Surrey County. Um, I did want to report um that uh the number of claims um that have been filed over the last past couple of weeks, um, starting with April four, unemployment claims for Surrey County started at eighty five. Um, the following week, April eleventh, it jumped to a hundred and seventy one. April the eighteenth, a hundred and seventy nine claims. April twenty fifth, two hundred and seven, two hundred and twenty seven claims. And the most recent report for March the second, two hundred and thirty one claims. So we do know that unemployment um numbers, of course, have impacted, uh, have been impactful for Surrey County as well. And that's all I had to report this evening, sir.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Rollins, for your report. Uh, we do have uh Mr. Phelps online. You still here, Mr. Phelps, with us? Do we still have Mr. Ray Phelps with us tonight? Where has he left?
Can you hear me, sir?
Yes, sir. Mr. Phelps, have, have a brief report for us on tonight.
Yes, sir. Uh, good evening, Chairman of the Board, Board members, uh, Ms. Rollins and uh citizens of Surrey County. Just want to, I'll give you a brief update on some of the things emergency management has been working on. Um, recently, we've been, over the last two weeks, we've been working diligently with the Crater Health District and the Virginia Army National Guard. Uh, and we are pleased to announce that we will be offering testing on May twenty eighth um at the Surrey County. Um, and that testing will uh begin at ten o'clock and run throughout the day. Uh, the Virginia National Car, uh, Virginia National Guard will be in town next week in which we will be conducting a recon on the building to find out what kind of uh logistics we need to, to be prepared for the twenty eighth testing. Um, I want to make sure, make this clear that this testing is not somebody to uh, to get a peace of mind that they have it or not. Um, there's actually criteria that is uh put in place by the Crater Health District and the Virginia National Guard. And you have to meet that criteria. So you do have to be presenting symptoms in order to, to receive that testing. And this testing, um, the governor announced is, is uh, is geared toward the uninsured or underinsured uh, um, citizens of our county. But um, if you, if you have any questions, you can contact our office. Um, and we will be putting out uh next week, start putting out some more information on that to inform the public uh, of what direction that we're going with our mission. And that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps, for uh the report on the testing. And I just, it's want to uh let the citizens know that Surrey County, we plan on moving from a position of prudence. Uh, the virus is still here and we want to do all we can to protect the citizens of Surrey County. So we ask that you would do the same. We do know that there are going to be uh some relaxation from this, from the governor on tomorrow with some businesses. But we ask that our citizens, that you would continue to use all precaution because we care about you so very much. So please, 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 please take caution and know that this virus is still very real and is still very alive. If there are no other uh comments from any board members, we will now entertain a motion for adjournment until May the twenty first uh twenty twenty at seven o'clock for our next virtual meeting.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This is Tim Calhoun.
Yes.
I, I failed to ask a question. I'm sorry, I, I failed to ask this question. But in our last meeting, um, we have, uh, we were told, uh, the public was told about the small, small business loans or not loans, but uh small business assistance that the county is able to provide, uh, the twenty thousand dollars. Has there been a process yet been announced on how that will, uh, how the uh small businesses can obtain that information?
Yes, sir. The process is still uh ongoing. Uh, the, it's going to be handled through our EDA. Uh, our staff and, and the EDO officer, they have uh made preparations to begin. The process is going to be handled through the EDAs. Everything is in motion at this time.
So any potential recipients should contact the EDA?
Yes, well, they contact our staff and they're going to be, it's an application process. And uh they contact staff at uh, at county administrator's office. They will be given the next direct, in the proper direction. We had uh talked with our legal team in this matter as far as setting up the, the board the way that we had before. And we found out that it would best represent the county if it would be handled through the EDA. So anybody that uh, any business in the county that uh would seek this grant, they should uh seek it through our uh county administrator's office and they will be given a direct, directs in which they should go forward to receive it.
Very good. That, that clears the question that I guess Mr. Calhoun and I had a couple of weeks ago about us being involved in it. So we want to have to be involved in that process now, am I correct?
You're correct, sir. If, if from, from a legal standpoint, it'd be best handled uh directly through the EDA upon approval uh from the board.
That is fine. Thank you.
And a follow up, and a follow up, Chairman, if you don't mind.
How is the public to be notified of this grant, uh, or the, not, uh, the small business?
Uh, I'm, I'm sure, Ms. Rollins, she can chime in, but I'm sure it's going to be put on our county website. And uh, I don't know if any other way it's going to be advertised, but uh, you know, word of mouth is always a good, good uh way to do it. But it would definitely be on our county website.
That is correct, sir. Yep. Yes, you are absolutely correct, sir. Um, it's a small community. Um, word of mouth would be um a, a good way as well. But yes, sir, uh, once all the um criteria and once the uh, the um, the agreement have been finalized, we will definitely get it posted on our website. We will share it with um the Chamber of Commerce. And we've already have a um business listing um that I'm sure there would be the, you know, who will receive the information. So they'll know the whole application process.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins, Chairman.
Yes, sir. We're going, we, we're going to proceed with uh what we originally stated, the funding and everything. Uh, but with, with the new monies coming in, we may be able to do something a little later, a little bit more for them. But right now, we're going to go forward with the plan that we have. Thank you. Are there any other, any other comments from, from the board members? It is, it's open for us now. This is a little different. We've done it virtually, so we can make some exceptions. Are there any comments from any other board members?
Mr. Chair, this is um Judy. I'm so happy, I was so happy to learn that the monies that were coming down from the federal government under the CARES Act came directly to some of the, the localities and we were included. Because at first, it was as if, you know, that five hundred thousand people was the only locality that would be receiving that. But due to the work of the state, um, VACO and NACO and the communities, we were able to be included. All counties and towns and cities were included in that CARES Act.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. We think any, anytime we can get any help and assistance in Surrey County, we are greatly appreciative of that. Any other comment, board members? If there are no other comments, then we will entertain a motion for adjournment for our May twenty first meeting at seven o'clock.
Don't move, Mr. Chair.
Have a motion. Can we have a second? And probably move a second. Ms. Chapman, could you give us a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. Roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Jury?
Yes.
Miss Little? We'll come back to Miss Little. Mr. Holmes? We'll come back to Miss Little. Mr. Holmes?
Yeah.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
And Miss Little, if you can hear us, um, if we can get your roll call vote.
Ms. Ms. Mrs. Little, she's having some difficulties, but we do have uh, the majority of the votes, so we will be in adjournment. She she probably can hear us, so I I know she won't be disagreeing. We will uh, have the majority, so we'll be in adjournment until May twenty first at seven PM. God bless you one and all, and by all means, do everything you can to stay safe.
Very good. Thank you.